Who was a bus attendant and Werner Albrecht, who is a retired, who is a retired bus attendant, who both passed away recently. If we can keep the Parker and Albrecht families in your thoughts and prayers, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask Sony move the agenda table, please. Moved by Vice President Moore, seconded by Ms. Farmer. Does anybody have any additions, corrections, deletions to the agenda? Seeing not all is in favor of the agenda, that passes eight to zero. We're into our union comments. GTA is up first. President Eberts, welcome this evening.
Hi there.
Been a long time.
It has been a long time, and I'm usually never one to sit in the front row, so this is a little new to me, but I like the new digs. Very nice. I'll keep my comments brief tonight. I had an opportunity this morning to speak at the opening day ceremonies, and so I'm going to touch on a few of those things. My name is Brian Eberts. I serve as the GTA president. Like to thank Superintendent Groutmann and her staff for really doing a ton of work to make this school year set up for success. Also want to thank all the Board of Education members. Your volunteerism is fantastic, and we really appreciate it. As always, it's a great time to be able to come here and share some, some insights from the GTA perspective. We had a chance to welcome many new faces to Greece this morning, and while we spoke of many topics, we all touched on the want to enhance our culture of collaboration that we have here in Greece. It will be a focus of GTA and district leadership this year. I promise to be brief, so I will be brief. I have two quick items to share with you. We are again accepting monetary donations to Operation Warm. This is a project that began many years ago and has been successful, purchasing winter coats for students in our elementary schools. If interested, you can donate via the GTA PayPal link on our website. It's greekteachers.com, and up to this date, we've purchased well over 3,300 coats for kids in the community. Lastly, please consider joining our Making Strides team this year. Right now, we are currently in first place in the community. We welcome you to join and walk with us in October. Additional information is also on our website. Again, thank you for the time to speak tonight. It was great seeing you all, and I'm going to steal a line from Sean. Go Bills.
Thank you, Brian. Shannon, come on down. Welcome this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm Shannon Heller. I'm the principal of the Greece Community Early Learning Center officially, and I'm very happy to be here representing GASSA this evening with a few news and notes and updates on behalf of my colleagues and, and our schools. So we're going to start with Buckman Heights. Principal James Reeves reached out, and this is a picture right there, and they just wanted to talk about the fact that they had a lot of construction going on at their school this summer, as a lot of us did, and so they went out into the community to meet and greet folks, to be a presence, and they were able to attend the Monroe County Family Coalition Back to School Initiative. Attended that last year myself. It's a wonderful, wonderful event, a lot of community, a lot of feel-good interactions with folks, so they were very proud that they were able to represent their school there, and just said thank you so much for the support in allowing them to do so. Next up is Olympia, and speaking on behalf of Dr. Sherry Weber, the principal over there, and she just wanted to share that they have done quite a bit of social-emotional learning work over the summer. They are implementing a program called Character Strong, which they are very proud of, and they are promoting with all of the stakeholders in the school, students, families, and the staff, and they are proudly calling the Spartan Flex Time. Through this work, we are also committing to eight core values. They wanted to share that, and they've created posters and signage and common verbiage for all over their building and in the classrooms for consistency and for, you know, that everyone receives the same messaging, so they wanted to pass that along. And speaking on behalf of Patty Hill and the principal, Michelle Barton, she wanted just to share that they've also been able to push out into the community, making those connections throughout the summer. They hosted a variety of events to welcome new students and returning students. They held community events at 12 different locations throughout the Greece community for students and families, and then the following two weeks, Patty Hill ambassadors gave school tours to over 25 new students, showing them around the building and highlighting important information and locations, and then they just wanted to share with you how they were preparing for opening day as well, and just how excited they were to see their kiddos. So this is on behalf of Shawna Sweet. Shawna is the Assistant Director of World Languages, and she wanted to share out a couple things. So the Department of World Languages is looking forward to convening several committees to look at district procedures and resources and to involve all stakeholders. This summer, they began looking at the ELL ID and placement process, multilingual parent communications, and the seal of bioliteracy. Also, Shawna was part of our leadership planning team for over the summer, our Leadership Week, and she was in charge of Day Five, I happen to know, and she planned a lot of, of the games and competitions that were held, and just some of that feel-good spirit, and of course, we had to represent our motto for the year, which is joy, in pictorial form with all of us in that picture, so a shout-out to Shawna and her team for putting that together. Of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our own school, which is the Early Learning Center. You can see my big smile. We've been very, very fortunate to be going through this four-year process, this transition process with all of you here and many of the folks who are in the audience. I personally just want to say on the behalf of our school that we are so, so thankful for this opportunity. I'm thankful to be the principal at this school, and we are happy to go into this next history in our, in our schools, just in our, in our history. And so, over the summer, we also had a lot of construction going on, but that didn't stop us from interacting with the community or wanting to reach out to folks and just giving us a presence within the community, and we were so excited to receive these young children and the young families that we wanted to get out there. So we held some reading, we call them the reading caravan, the ELC reading caravan, where we went out to some of the local parks and recreation sites, and we met folks out there who were going to be coming to our school. We read to them, had some popsicles, just a time for interacting, and that was a wonderful way of building relationships. We were able to host our kindergarten orientation at school, but outside. We have some folks who received their whale, their little logo cupcakes or cookies, they were very happy, and we were able to hold an entire building-wide meet and greet outside as well, where families, they really had expressed an interest to want to meet, you know, their children's teachers and staff ahead of time, which I don't blame them as a mom of three, so I can understand, and we were able to do so. And then through all the very, very hard efforts of our facilities folks and many of you sitting around this table, we were able to open up successfully. A lot of work has gone into this years, but in the weeks, just recently and even days, and we were able to host meet and greets with our families inside the school today. So the images on the left are kind of what we did throughout the summer, and then you can see some of the images on the right there of the new ELC facility. It's beautiful, it's interactive, and we can't wait for you to come on over and to host our new families. So I went on a little bit about myself there, about the ELC, but we're just very proud. And then just two more schools that I wanted to share out on their behalf. So on behalf of English Village and Jason Lewis, the theme for their school this year is Be Kind. Wanted to share with you that their EV meet and greets are Tuesday, September 6th. Well, they just held them from 12 to 3:00. And then their school pep rally is going to be on September 9th at 9:20, if you'd like to come on over. And then they're going to be hosting a 9/11 ceremony on 9/12 at 3:00 PM. So they wanted to make sure we got that out too, in time. And then one last comment. A lot of people are excited about opening day, you guys, so I had quite a few comments to share. This is on behalf of Pine Brook and the principal Andrea Giglia. She wanted to share that one of their first grade students, Malagro Castillo Chavez, won an award this summer from New York State TESL for her Pine Brook Elementary story. She was honored at the 52nd Annual New York State TESL Conference in White Plains, New York in November, and will receive $100, where she will be honored. So that's something they were very proud of, and they wanted to get that out into the community. And then they also held their first kindergarten welcome fair, which was a huge success. Families explored kids' care, PTSD, spirit wear, pictures with the Panther, the playground, the nurse, classrooms, tours, and a little bit additional sights to see there. And then lastly, in an effort to connect early on in their journey together, new Pine Brook families experienced three personalized calls to welcome them to their Pine Brook community, and then this included contact from their mental health team, their admin team, and then their classroom teacher. So just a true attempt to reach out prior to the school year and make those personal connections. So on behalf of all of us, GASSA, just want to say thank you, and I hope you all have a great year. Thanks.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, moving on to Residence Forum. I have five speakers signed up to speak for Residence Forum. There'll be a clock that appears. You have four minutes to speak. I'm going to cut you off right at the forum minute mark, so try to wrap your comments up before that. Our first speaker is Lori Gardner. Is Lori here?
Hi, my name's Lori Gardner. I am an employee of the Greece Transportation Department for the last eight years. I am also a Greece taxpayer. My concern tonight that I would like to discuss is we start school tomorrow, as everyone is well aware, and I want to talk about parking for the employees. This is a new building for us, and we were expecting to park in the front of the building. I understand from emails that we've received that they do not want us to park there because they want to use it for professional development and learning centers that are coming in, which we agree with that, but full-time employees parking in the front, we only have maybe 30 full-time employees that will be parking in the front? We think we should be able to park in the front instead of on the side of the building or all the way behind Arcadia. What I would ask of you when you leave this meeting, I would like you to take a look at Old Schoolhouse Road right here. Now, some of us start at anywhere from 5:00 in the morning all the way up until 7:00, 7:30. So if you're here first thing in the morning, you're going to get a prime spot on Old Schoolhouse Road. The later you come in, you're going to be all the way down on the end where the bleachers are. Now, 75% of the transportation employees are senior citizens. That is a long way for everyone to walk in the middle of winter. When you're coming in that early in the morning, we already know from working here for many years that not everything is plowed, not everything is salted. So now you have senior citizens that are in their 70s, 80s. We even have someone in their 90s that is still working here. Now, it's going to take someone 15, 20 minutes just to get into the building to punch in. We don't, not that we don't think it's right, we would like you to consider allowing us to park in the front. Send us out an email when there's going to be a learning center going on, and we will not park there. We will go someplace else, but our concern is we have a brand-new building with a huge lot right in front, and there's going to be 30 cars parked out there. Instead of allowing us to utilize that parking lot unless someone is coming in, and then we would go elsewhere, and we would just like you to reconsider and take into consideration the 75% of senior citizens that are here. Last year, we had one of our employees that fell down. She was laying in a snowbank in the back of the building for an hour before anyone found her. She could not get up. She laid out there in the snow for an hour, freezing to death, and they had to call an ambulance, and she had to be taken away. Now, there is a lot of handicapped people here that work in transportation, you're well aware of it. Please reconsider.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
Thank you for your time.
Next up is Rita Francowiac. I'm sorry if I butchered that.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving this, giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of all our drivers in attendance. I actually have two parts. I'm going to try and make this fast so I can touch base on both of, of what I have to talk about tonight. To reiterate what Lori said, we have lost 32 parking spots on the side where our dispatch offices are. There's 20 handicapped, and beside each handicapped spot, there's yellow lines, so we're not allowed to park there as well. Tomorrow, we'll probably have over 200 employees here for the first day of school, and some of us come in at 7:00 AM, report time, which, I don't know where we're going to park, there's, there's a small group of us, but we were told only full-time 12-month employees were to park up front, and the 10-month would be behind Arcadia and along Schoolhouse, Schoolhouse Road. With the amount of employees we have, I, I simply say there's not going to be enough parking for us if we cannot park out front, you know, to, and with the 32 spots that we lost for regular parking. Second half of what I have to say is I am a parent, a single parent of a daughter in Arcadia. The bullying and the fights. I want to know going forward, it's a brand-new school year, what do we have in place so she will not have a horrible year like last year? The bullying went onto her bus, which my supervisor knew, you know, we had discussions about. The fighting, she'd come home, she's already on a 504 plan for anxiety for the loss of her father. She would come home saying, "I don't want to go to school. Mom, take me to school. I don't want to go. I don't feel safe. We, we, we need to do better. We need to do something." And I, I just want to put that in your guys' minds, how, how we can do this. Also, years past, we used to hold the disciplinary accountability in the Transportation Department. We used to take care of that portion of when kids were fighting on the buses. It used to be in our hands. The schools do have a lot on their plates. Maybe if we take that back, you know, we can run the cameras really fast, our supervisor team, they can implement, you know, with Steve Chatterton, they can implement something right away. Instead of waiting for the principals to see the tapes, involve the schools, maybe us taking that back, we can get better, a better handle on some things. She is going to be in Arcadia. The resource officer thing hit a nerve when, you know, we found out that we weren't going to have our officers, you know, with us this year, but then I read some emails, we are going to have security officers take their place, and I want to thank you all for, for making that happen. I do feel a little better, but with the fighting going on in these schools, our radios last school year, Arcadia and Athena were high up there for the fights. We, you know, we hear it over our radios, and I'm a parent there, my stomach, you know, I'm taking care of my kids on my bus, my stomach drops, you know, nervous, you know, is she okay, you know, is she involved, whatever. But those were the two schools that really had a lot of calls this past school year for the fighting. Dismissals, there's a lot of chaos, there's kids everywhere. I invite...
I'm going to have to have you wrap up.
So those are the two topics I wanted to touch on tonight. If you guys want to show up at dismissals, see how the buses are loaded, see the chaos...
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Is your Shaun Henderson here? Guess that's a swing and a miss, so we'll go on.
He's probably going to be a little late. He's going to try to give you some...
Well, if he comes in before other two speakers wrap up, I will let him speak. Mary Leike. Is Mary here? Mary, welcome again.
I was glad to hear last month that the comprehensive sexual education is not being taught in Greece schools, but it's coming, and not deciding where you stand is ill-advised. As I read your Good News newsletter, I was disappointed to see that of the four new principals, not one mentioned a goal of rigorous academics. I was also curious about the social-emotional learning blocks being added to every school day. I researched and found more specific goals of enhancing social and emotional competencies needed for civic engagement and social change, such as reflecting on personal and social identities, examining prejudices and biases, interrogating social norms, disrupting and resisting inequities, and co-constructing equitable and just solutions. Creating a unified professional learning and implementation plan that develops a shared understanding of SEL in service of equity and excellence grapples with broad issues of systemic racism and oppression in education and society. Are we talking about schools now or Marxist bootcamps? Are we no longer a country where all men are created equal? We are far from perfect, but our constitution is based on freedom and liberty and relies on a moral citizenship to succeed. Those who profess our country suffers from systemic racism should study our history a little better. The first slave ship came to Plymouth, Massachusetts with 20 African men who works, worked as indentured servants for seven years and then were free, most of whom became landowners. The United States was the first of 84 countries to restrict slave trade and the fourth to outlaw it completely. The century after slavery ended, we see strong black communities with strong families headed by two parents, strong churches, strong schools and universities, businesses owned by neighbors. Students received excellent educations, communities were safe and stable. When the government decided that separate but equal was wrong, and it was, their remedy of civil rights legislation resulted in upheaval and destabilization. Cities grew, poverty grew, and politicians became rich. The results were devastating. No one ever engaged community leaders, so the medicine killed the patient. Families raise their children. Schools educate them. Parents and churches teach values, and schools should honor them. School boards should know the function of schools and stay in their lane. School board members, you pledge to support the constitutions of the United States and New York State. In today's climate, that will mean standing against unconstitutional executive orders and mandates. You must be engaged on a regular basis in conversations with parents who know what's best for their children, and with teachers and other district employees who have a different perspective than administration. I will end with a quote from your 2027 strategic plan. What that looks like in Greece is every member of our school community feeling seen, heard, welcomed, and valued. That doesn't happen in a four-minute soundbite once a month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leike. And our last speaker is Cassie, I can't, Cav...
Cavalier.
Cavalier, okay, I couldn't read your writing, sorry. Welcome, Cassie.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to start off with saying that the programs over the summer was great, having the free sports camps, but what I would like to say really quick is if you can maybe try next year to have those, like the soccer camps were only for the bigger kids. If you can put that for the elementary kids, that would be great. My son did get to go to the STEM camp, which was great, so I would like to see that going on next year. And I would also like to touch base on the police department not being in our schools this year. I understand that you hired 80 to 90 new security guards, but I'm sorry, the 80 or 90 security guards is not, it doesn't make me feel safe. You know, if there was an active shooter situation, would they really know how to handle the situation? Even, you can practice it until you're blue in the face, but when you're not really ever into that kind of situation or, you know, have that long training, I just don't think it's, they're equipped enough to handle those situations, or if there was a true emergency, if, you know, if they knew, because I know, if I, I know for like me, if I was like in a situation, I would freeze, you know, like, oh my God, what, what am I going to do, you know? And that doesn't make me feel very comfortable, sending my kids to school, and not now, they can't have their cellphones neither. I'm not, I'm not sure if you all know, but for all these different active shooting things that happen in all these other states, those kids and those cellphones actually save lots of lives. So for you not to have these kids want their cellphones with them and not have the police officers, and it's just, it's just very unsettling, you know, because there was kids in classrooms that were able to call their parents or able to call for extra help when all those active shooting things was happening in Texas and other states. So now we don't have the police department, we don't have really any emergency personnel to handle really real situations, and now you want the kids to put their cellphones and everything else in these pouches, and I'm sorry, but if my kids have smartwatches, they're not going to put those in those pouches. They're watches, you know? And for you to take $100,000 to put in these pouches, and now you're $100,000 short to pay the state, the county or whatever budget for the police departments, the town, it's just a very unsettling feeling that you took the $100,000 for the pouches away from their budget, and now we don't have the protection in the schools or even a good authority, you know, of somebody in a uniform that would be able to kind of like create or make connections with these kids, you know, so, oh yeah, I see you at school, you know, I may see you at the park or whatever, to kind of keep that going, it just saddens me. So I don't know really the details, if it was the school district that was wrong or if it was the town that was wrong, because the town is saying that the school district has shorted them for years past and that they were using our tax dollars to pay for the, the officers that were in the school, and, or if it was the lack of the school district not budgeting well enough. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to correct a misstatement that you had about the budgeting of, the budget for the SROs and the budget for the yonder bags were totally unrelated. So money ain't get taken from one fund around student safety going to another fund that we funded, the yonder bags. That was inaccurate. I just want to make sure that that's clear, because that's not what happened. Is Mr. Henderson here? All right, so Mr. Henderson's not here, we're going to move on. Can I Sony move staffing, please? Moved by Ms. Flores, seconded by Ms. Farmer. Any comments, questions, or concerns on staffing? Any comments, questions, or concerns on staffing? Seeing none, all is in favor? Opposed, that passes eight to zero. Moving on, on two point zero two, the Teamsters memorandum of agreement. Can I Sony move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to nothing. Moving on to two point zero three, the Greece Teachers Association MOAs. Can I Sony move those to the table, please? Moved by Vice President Melor, seconded by Ms. Flores. Any comments, questions, or concerns on those? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to nothing. Moving on to two point zero four, can I Sony move the Gerald TC individual agreement to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, concerns on those? Seeing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Two point zero five, district safety officer agreement. Can I have Sony move that to the table, please? Moved by Vice President Melor, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving on to four point zero one, community schools update. Superintendent Groutmann.
Good evening. What we would like to do is share with you an update. We can see a lot of women in blue who are part of our team. And this is directly part of our Reach 2027 strategic plan in terms of how are we supporting our community. We thought it would be a beautiful time to be able to share some of the supports and services and ways that we are reaching out to our students and families, particularly now at the beginning of the year. So as this new team has formed, and you see all those bright smiley faces, I was gonna have Kelly and Val come on up and share a little bit about your work this year.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. So, community school update. We have the privilege of getting up in front of you and talking about some of the highlights from community schools a couple of times a year. And, and it's very exciting to stand before you and share some of the great things that Kathy alluded to that are going on already this summer and into the, into the school year. So, the outcomes for this presentation, our hope is that you'll have a better understanding of the community school strategy here in Greece. You're also going to get to explore some of the focus areas of community schools in our, in our district. You're going to develop an understanding of the Greece Central School District Family Engagement Implementation Plan. That's a priority area for us. And also, we're going to talk a little bit around measuring the success metrics. So we're gonna be up in front of you a few times this year talking about community schools and the metrics around the gains that we're making in a measurable way. So, some of you have seen some of these slides before, but I think it's worthy of revisiting it. What is community school? The definition from Abe Fernandez, the Director of the National Center for Community Schools, is community school is a strategy that organizes the resources and the voice of schools and the communities around student success. So really and truly, it does take a community to ensure that we have successful students. We know that our students can thrive when they have success, you know, going on in their families, in their school, and overall support of the community. So this is a huge priority. I love this, this graphic, and you've seen this a few times before as well, but when you think of that old, and, you know, there might even be some people in the room that can't even identify what that, that object is on the left. But that old-fashioned rotary phone, you just used to stick your finger in and like wait for it to go around. But that's, that's more of a conventional, traditional model of school, being just a prime focus on academics. And we know students are coming to us with greater and greater need. And so this notion of a smartphone that does so much for us, provides so many different resources for us, that really is the community school model. So the priority area is academics, but also social-emotional well-being for, for our students and for our families. And then this idea of just supporting the families and the benefit that happens in the community. It was, it was wonderful this morning. Kelly and I had the opportunity to go over to Holmes Road Elementary School, and that is in our expansion of community schools. Holmes Road is a new community school. And the teachers were so excited as Kelly was walking through a presentation around community schools, because what we know is our kids come to us with more and more need all the times. Our families have need. And we're putting more and more on the plates of teachers around things that you have to do. And you could just see, like, the weight being lifted off of the teachers' shoulders as they're learning and understanding the resources and just all that community school brings. And so we're super excited to be able to have that expansion. When we started with community schools, we got some guidance around, basically, from the National Community School Standards around what we should be doing. And we worked with Cause Wave around an intended impact. So basically, you put a strategy in place, and then what is the impact that we really hope to be able to accomplish? So we really have this as sort of our guidepost around the work that we are doing. So I will read it to you. We're committed to ensuring equitable outcomes by building deep connections with our families and creating strategic partnerships so that students can be healthy and successful, families can be strong, and that overall, our community can really thrive. So just to kind of back up a little bit, this notion of community schools, it was sort of the brainchild of Superintendent Groutmann back in 2015, when she became superintendent. One of the things that she and I sat and talked about, she's like, Val, I would really love to think about community schools and, and bringing that to Greece. I really think that the Greece community would benefit from it. And it was really just like her vision around wanting that to happen. So we began investigating across the state what community schools could look like and what the resources could, could look like. And basically, we, we were able to, to do some research, attend some national conferences, and develop a better understanding of what community schools would look like. Saw the success that it brought to communities through the strategy. And, and I came back from a conference, I was just so excited and realized that the one thing I learned is you cannot have a successful community school strategy if you don't have a community school coordinator, really kind of like taking the, the lead with this. So Kathy and I, actually Kathy and I went to Senator Robach at the time, and we, we basically said we would really love to do this, but we need some help financially. And he was able to come up with some bullet aid money for us to be able to fund Kelly's position. And so in seventeen eighteen, we were able to, to accomplish this. Since then, we've been able to braid together various funding streams. And, and I'm so, so excited to report that now, fast forward just a few years, that we now have nine community school site coordinators. We have one lead parent coordinator. We have parent coordinators that really help just immensely with that parent connection in all eighteen of our schools. We have a community school assistant, and we have two part-time community advocates that are part of the Systems Intervention Project together now. The other thing that's really exciting is, and I, and I was, I was sharing with, with Kathy the other day just how much we've grown from going to a national conference and looking at this and thinking, wow, we could bring something like this to Greece. And having a vision around that, and then trying to actualize it. So having that impact statement really helped guide us. But now, we are really leaders in New York State and, and across the nation. So fast forward a few years later, and, and Kelly and I both have presented both at state and national conferences around this work. And furthermore, many school districts across the state are now reaching out to us for technical assistance on how to really be a model for community schools, which is something that I think that, you know, very often we're not real good at tooting our own horn. But I think that's something that we can really, really be proud of. Community schools are big in a lot of urban centers, and they can be big in rural centers where the community, where schools can tend to be the hub of the community. But in the suburbs, not so much. So we're really, we're really, really proud of, of the work that we've done. In your PowerPoint, if you click on Meet the Team, you would have a link to all of our wonderful folks. You can do that at your leisure. But I would just say, if everybody that's here tonight in the blue shirts would just stand up and be recognized real quick for the hard work that, that you're doing. This is a phenomenal team that really is, is, is in the weeds with, with doing the work. And I just so appreciate them coming out this evening. Also, just sort of a selfish plug, that this month, I think it's the week of September nineteenth, it's, the focus is on community school coordinators, right? And community school support, where we have, like, teacher awareness and all the different awarenesses that we, that we focus on, and it's gonna be community schools in September, so. All right, for Greece Central, we talked about sort of the focus areas that we look at here in Greece. And this is very aligned with the National Community School Standards. Here in Greece, what it looks like for us is expanded learning. There was some mention tonight around some of the different opportunities that our kids have been able to take advantage of over the summer. We're looking to have that happen during the school year as well. And then we're really, really excited about this. Our parents spoke and said that they wanted more opportunities for our kids. And we responded in a way that I thought was overwhelmingly successful. So expanded learning is one of the things that we do. Integrated Health and Social Services, we've been able to put our families in contact with a lot of additional supports. And Kelly's gonna speak to that a little bit more deeply. Family and Community Engagement, it is so important that we're having the voice of our parents and of our community. And we have mechanisms in place to be able to do this through community schools. And then finally, the last priority area here in Greece is early childhood development. This is a huge priority, making sure that we're bringing our kids in, our families in, really engaging them in their child's education early on. Dr. Heller was up this evening and spoke a little bit about the, the Early Learning Center. And that's, that's a piece of it, that's a component of it, but this is also a priority area. And now I'm gonna turn it over to, to Kelly to speak a little more deeply about the different priority areas.
Hi, everyone. Kelly Spreduto, Community Schools and Family Engagement. So as Val alluded to, one of the focus areas is expanded learning opportunities. Last year, we did a family need survey that went out to the whole district, and we heard from over three thousand families about their needs. And one of the things they said was that the town of Greece lacked offerings for free and low-cost programming for their kids, and that they wanted to see more of that. So over the summer, we had over five hundred children participate in our free summer camps. There was science and technology, sports and arts and music. Kids were able to play Survivor during sports camp, make slime during STEM, program robots, play instruments, and express themselves throughout the arts. And also at Kids Care, kids were able to participate in the free summer camps as well for five weeks. We were able to provide transportation to family, to children for two weeks for kids who otherwise wouldn't be able to attend sports or any camps because either their parents were working or didn't have transportation of their own. And I did wanna give a shout out to all the teachers who gave up their summers to work those camps. They were much appreciated. So this slide shows the Integrated Health and Social Services we've been able to build with community partners throughout the district. Just gonna briefly talk about a few of those. So we have the Primary Project, which is a tier-two intervention for our youngest learners, kids who might be having a hard time adjusting to school, feeling a little school anxiety. They get to work directly with child associates just to get more comfortable in the school buildings. We have Food Link with a district-wide food pantry that any student or family in the district can access year-round. We have Generation Two Mentoring, where we pair mentors from the community with K-two kiddos for thirty minutes a week. Nazareth College has been a huge support at the Early Learning Center, where they're offering play therapy. We have student teachers working with kiddos as well. The Center for Youth is our lead agency for community schools. So all of these lovely ladies are hired through the Center for Youth. And we also have social learning specialists working in our schools as well, helping support students, keeping them in class, on task, helping them stay focused. Hillside, we have a new partnership for the Work Scholarship Program at Phoenix and Athena. The Villa of Hope also has a new partnership for insurance billable counseling for students at Phoenix. And then Rochester Regional Health has been a huge partner, offering therapy and, to our students across every single building. Instead of a child having to be picked up, driven to a doctor's office, coming back to school three hours later, they're able to do a thirty-minute appointment and get right back to class, which has been really huge. As we mentioned before, we have family and community engagement. We've been offering parent exchanges district-wide, virtually, which has been lovely, because people don't have to come out, especially in the winter. They can be right in the comfort of their home with their kids, making dinner and engaging in the conversations. The Parent Leadership Training Institute has really been instrumental in those conversations. We've had some of our board members attend, and it's really great to just hear the perspective of our families. And this is a picture, actually, from last June, I believe, when we presented about family engagement to the board. As we mentioned before, we have parent coordinators who are working in every building. Shelby Levitro is our lead parent coordinator. She co-facilitates all the training for the team, helps them share out best practices across the district, and is really instrumental in making sure that our parent coordinators know exactly what to do and how to stay engaged in their schools. And the parent coordinators, like we said, are working in every building twelve hours a week. Every year, we try to just get a little bit more of their time, because Shelby always says they're moms who get things done, and they really do. So we love having them with us. So our comprehensive family engagement plan, based on the research of Dr. Kiran Map and other research nationwide, we created a plan to really help all of our schools implement. This year, we've done a slow pilot and transition to bring on more schools each year so that we can fully support them. This year, every school in the district will be part of this implementation plan with the support of myself, Shelby, and our site coordinators. The plan allows each school some autonomy in just identifying their current state, what's working well for them with family engagement, and how best they can help support families. Our vision is to engage and empower every family to be proactive in their kids' education so that they can reach their full potential. So we're really leaning heavily on the voice of parents on these committees as well, just to hear from them about what their needs are and how we can work together to support their kids. And Dr. Heller shared a little bit about the Early Learning Center earlier. But one of the things we have are bedtime boxes, which we shared with the board last year. And we have created new ones this year where through grant funding, each of our pre-case students' families comes to a workshop. They get to hear about best practices for creating a bedtime routine. And each child gets an alarm clock, a sound machine, bath toys, a book, a plush-stuffed animal, and a chart to fill out on consistent bedtime routines. And then they bring that to school to share with their teachers. We have Nazareth, like I mentioned before. And then we created our Gateway to Greece, which is just really our way of welcoming and transitioning families into the district so that they feel welcome from the first time they walk into our schools. Okay, this is the part I'm most excited about. You have flyers in front of you with two of these posters that you can share with others, put up wherever you are. But we are having a neighborhood navigation center. And I'm gonna read my slides on this, because there's so much information. So hold on one sec. So we are in early adoption phase of Together Now, which is countywide. It's supported by the United Way and ESL, helping bring resources and services to the community and to our families. They will have My Wayfinder software that helps staff directly connect with providers across the county. So families will be able to come into our navigation center and connect with a staff member who can help meet all of their needs. So whether it's advancing their own education, finding childcare for their children, whether they need help finding stable housing because they really wanna stay in our district, or if they have a car that's about to be repossessed and they don't know how they're gonna get their kids to and from their after-school activities, we will have a person there to help support them. We really just want families to be in the best position to help their kids be successful in school. And we know sometimes they need a little bit more support than they have. This is a hundred percent grant-funded. It's amazing. We are, like I said, in the early adoption stage. We are the only district, besides one other school, that's doing this work right now. And it's the only program of its kind in Greece. So we're super excited about it. So this will be at Elcott Road, the same building as Phoenix. Families can make appointments. That information is on the posters that are gonna be shared throughout our community. We had a soft open in July, but we'll be inviting all of you to our grand opening once we have everything perfectly in place. But in the meantime, anyone in the community can do a referral to our email or call the phone number, and they get a call back right away. And like I said, it's just to connect families with whatever support they need. So we know it's important to measure success. As Val alluded to earlier, it is an ESSA-approved strategy for school improvement. And so we are working with some consultancy groups to look at how we're measuring that success with both quantitative and qualitative data, looking at increasing our offerings before and after school and over the summers, increasing the enrollment in those offerings, improving two-way communication, offering more family engagement opportunities. We will have a Fall Family Fest for the first time ever this year, with more information to come soon, increasing our parent involvement in all of our committees, and just basically increasing opportunities for all different, of all four focus areas so that families and students are successful. So that data will be shared throughout the year. And now it's time for questions.
Questions?
Questions. Ms. Flores. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say thank you very much to everybody who is working in our community schools. I had the privilege of meeting with Kelly and Stacy Remillard from our English Village location to talk about community schools, and I was blown away by the things that we are capable of doing as a district. It is my understanding we are currently the only district in Monroe County that does this, correct?
That's correct.
So, while we are trying to expand it, obviously, we're in a great place from all sorts of different funding that we've had, and not necessarily in a budget-cut situation, which I know a lot of you have experienced in the past. How do we best continue to expand this to our entire district, and how do we best get other districts involved? This is such an amazing thing. And I know that when it comes to our kids, yes, we're a place of education, but if we do not address the social-emotional issues of our students and our families, they're going to struggle to focus on that educational need. How do we get there? What else do we need to do?
It's like we planted you. Do you want me to go ahead and start?
I was going to say around the funding, I mean, I think that's a really important question. So, one of the things that we're doing is, yes, having conversations with other districts, thinking of ways to be able to create like a coser through BOSI, so if other school districts pay into that, then we can get aid back on that. One of the things that's really outstanding, and it was through a lot of advocacy, is even with the monies that we get from the state for schools, we never used to have community school funds that we were supposed to spend. Now, there's actually community school set-aside money that school districts are required to use for community schools. So, we're trying to get more information out around the good work that we're doing and get more school districts that are interested, and so there's that piece. But the other piece that we were talking about, sort of like braiding together these creative funding streams to be able to do it, when we first started this, Kathy and I were talking, or mentioned earlier about Kathy and I going to Senator Robach to be able to like get some funds, to kind of get this, you know, seed money, to kind of get it up and going. And now, we have a lot of different people approaching us around different things perhaps that we'd like to do, and offering some funding around that, or these sort of creative ideas to be able to expand upon those priority areas of community schools. So, that's really exciting. But the idea of community schools in the suburbs is a bit novel, right? So, it is catching on, and we're having more conversations with colleagues across the county to, you know, just offer ways that you too can do this.
Well, I must say, as a district, we have our ups and downs on everything that we do, but this is an amazing program, and I'm really excited about the things that we're able to offer. There are so many gaps in services for our families out there, and this is just a way for us to bring a community more together and to be able to provide the resources for our students that they need to succeed in our district. So, thank you, guys. You're doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Please, President Malory.
I've been involved in the community school since it started. The slide with Kelly's picture and the picture of these ladies just warmed my heart because there it is right before you, how we've grown. I think I ask this every time, though, but one of the things we've talked about is medical and dental. We did have the Smile Mobile till that darn COVID came along. Do we have any plans for expanding with medical and dental?
So, we are looking at a variety of options, and we also know some of our community partners are also looking into that. So, I think in the very near future, there will be a couple of options for families.
I think that's a really good point, though, because one of the things we know with community schools is doing a needs assessment. We can sit here all day long and say, we think our community needs this. The point around like getting out there and asking questions and getting more information around what does our community need so that we can work together with securing strategic partnerships to be able to help us accomplish what our community is telling us that we need.
Ms. Suwicky.
So, just a question on reach, right? You know, I think about the parent-to-parent exchanges and, you know, the parent coordinator supports. Do we have a measure of like how many, I'll say, unique families we're touching, right? And then, I guess, a follow-up to related question, right? The more traditional parent organizations, whether it's booster clubs or PTA at all the schools, how does that interface? Because it feels like there's a mutually beneficial relationship there that, you know, the organizations could pull off of. How are you guys thinking about that?
All good questions. So, last year, we piloted a new way of collecting data from our coordinators, and the specific question about unique families being reached is asked. So, by the end of this year, we'll have data saying our community schools coordinators and our parent coordinators connected with X amount of families of those this many are unique, or this many were connected with multiple times. What was your other question? Oh, I know. Okay, PTA, PTA and boosters. So, we always have our community schools coordinators collaborate with other organizations that are already in place. So, we try to cosponsor events with them and work together because it's silly to work in silos. So, whenever we can collaborate, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Von Goria.
I really love the way the community schools concept breaks down what's really a big district, right? We've got a huge district here, and it brings it all to a much closer level. That idea of subsidiarity is really important, giving parents, families more voice in their immediate context. I think this maybe tags on to John's question, Mr. Suwicky's question. A concern that I would have is that our district being big, and we know that there's been concern about that two-way communication, it helps to bring it to that level. But do we then start to absorb some of these, some of the other roles of the roles of, you know, that families have normally had, that churches have normally had, that other civic organizations have had? Do they start to get sucked into the district bureaucracy, and do we start to lose some of that connectedness then?
Yeah, I think the point with community schools, it's about having the conversation around what our community needs, and then going out to help secure the resources, the strategic partnerships to be able to help lift that. So, I mean, we have reached out to colleges and universities. We've reached out to different faith-based organizations. Like, when we identify a need, like, who else might be able to help this? So, for example, Longridge was our first community school, and we knew that some of those expanded learning opportunities that we wanted to have happen for kids through the form of clubs, that was something that we wanted to have happen. Through the partnership with Hope Church, we were able to actualize that for our kids. So, that idea of being able to offer that, and then the other piece, too, is like, we know this is good for our kids. This is good for students. This is good for families. So, that idea of, is it something that schools should step into? I would argue all day long that if our students are stronger, our families are stronger, our Greece community is stronger, and that's something that we need. There's research, too, that shows like return on investment for when you're, you know, investing in community schools. Like, it really does benefit the community because people want to come and live in the community where there's this like level of support, like, we care about our kids. We want to offer these things for our kids, and it's not necessarily like the school district's footing the bill on this. We're going out, we're looking for creative partnerships to be able to make this happen. But it's by engaging in those conversations. So, surveys, one way of doing this. I'll tell you, the best way to get the data is with these people sitting right here tonight, right? Like, these parent coordinators that are making the connections with the families and hearing things that our families are saying that they need. That's another piece of data that we're collecting to be able to kind of find those partnerships and those resources for kids. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. To some degree, inside baseball, we had a conversation earlier in the week, and you shared some of that information regarding some of the collaborations. And I really think those are some of the most critical parts of it, so I applaud you for that. I'd ask the further question, if I may. How do we, what can we do to expand that collaboration? We know that our families are hurting, that they're in disrepair. That's probably the single biggest factor driving our lagging performance nationally as well as locally. How do we engage, how do we use this to further that process and invite more people in?
I was going to add on to what Val said earlier, too. Part of it is that we give families what they need. So, what your family needs might be very different than what her family needs, and so it's not that we're offering every family counseling or every family connection to Hope Church. It's when a family comes with an ask that we deliver a partnership that makes sense to that family, and that if families have what they need in that department, obviously, they don't reach out for that. But I think a lot of our work is building the capacity of families to be stronger so that they are self-sufficient and able to help support their own kids. But sometimes, it's just a little hurdle help along the way.
Are there questions or comments?
I just have one. I remember the cold winter morning when you explained this to me in the superintendent's office, Val, and to see how far this program has come and what a tremendous job all of you guys have done, it truly warms my heart. When Val explained it, I'm like, ah, I don't know. I mean, I'm all for it, but I don't know how quick it's going to work. And to see the amazing job that you guys have done and continue to grow, I agree with Vice President Malory. You know, the medical thing is a big thing for me. I think, you know, some type of a clinic or whatever, if we can provide that type of service down the road, I think our community definitely needs it. But you guys have just done an amazing job, and I just want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Education and our community for what all you guys have done. It's truly appreciated. You guys do a great job. Thank you so much. Thank you.
And if I could just, Sean, I know these amazing ladies. We talk about the moms that get stuff done, but they need to like get their kids ready for school tomorrow, so they're going to head out.
Good luck, Ables. You're probably not going to sleep much tonight.
All right, moving on to item 4.02, the limited income exemption. Superintendent Grauman.
Yeah, I'm going to, this was a conversation that, as you all know as board members, we started to have at a retreat recently, but wanted to bring the conversation to open session, just to have this open conversation about this option.
Let me try that again. We recently had a conversation with our Board of Education at a retreat related to this, and felt strongly that it was a conversation that we wanted to have an open session. So, I'm going to have Romeo bring us through some important information related to some decision-making that's ahead of us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. As Superintendent Grauman said, we'd like to take a look at our limited income exemptions that we currently provide to our residents. The current thresholds have not been reviewed in several years, and we thought it'd be good to bring it back to the board to take a look at and make some decisions on where we might want to go with that. And part of that reason is that several of our residents each year apply for limited income exemptions with the town of Greece and Monroe County when their school tax bills come around, and they qualify for those exemptions, but they may not necessarily qualify for any exemptions with us because our thresholds are different. So, what we wanted to do this evening is just touch on some items, some background, some analysis that we did, talk about the exemption limits, show you where we are actually with our exemptions currently and a possible proposal that we were talking about earlier, and then look at some options. So, what is unique here is we spoke with the board at a retreat in, I want to say, the third week in August, mid to third week in August, and what has changed since then is New York State since, or during that conversation, had passed a law that had increased the exemptions for 50% exemption from 29,000 up to 50,000. So, that has already changed over the last two or three weeks. But we're going to do this presentation based on what we talked about at the retreat versus the new thresholds that may be out there. And it is my understanding that the county is looking at them, and the town of Greece is also looking at them and waiting to see what the county does with this new threshold of 50,000 before they make any decisions. But rather than go ahead and jump to a $50,000 proposal, we went back and just kept the presentation to what the board had asked with the current policy. So, the basics exemption allows a school district to set a maximum exemption limit for incomes between 3,000 and, up until a month ago, it was 29,000. It is now 50,000, depending on what the board wishes to do. And then, for those incomes above 29,000, now 50,000, above 29,000, you can also approve a sliding scale, which provides rather than a 50% exemption, a 30% or a 20% or a 5%, whatever the board wishes to do. Currently, there are two types of exemptions. On the left is the limited income senior exemption. The requirement there is that you're 65 years of age or older, and you meet the income limitations. There is also a disability exemption, which you have to have evidence of your disability and also meet some limited income requirements. If you do meet those requirements, you can get up to a 50% reduction in your tax bill, and that's prior to any star exemptions that are also applied to your bill. However, if that resident has a child living with them that attends a public school, that exemption is not granted. So, the way that works is the towns and the counties will send out forms and ask you that question of, do you have a child attending a public school? You answer that question, you send in the form. It's an annual form, and then you will be approved or not approved for that limited income exemption or the disability exemption. So, for the numbers that we're going to show you this evening, we use the most recent tax rolls that we received from the town of Greece this year. We assume that everyone that qualified for the town of Greece or the counties, or the counties' exemptions would apply and be approved and qualify for ours, which would have whatever impact they're having on the town of Greece, we're assuming would have the same impact on our numbers as well. So, what you're seeing here are where the two schedules currently stand. The Greece schedule is on the left, and you can see that for, in order to receive a 50% exemption from your assessed value, you need to make less than $20,000. And then, the scale's up from 20 to 21 to 22, and you can see going down, and as you make more income, you get less of an exemption. And up, when you make $28,399, or thereabouts, in between the two lower ones, you can get up to 5%. If you make more than $28,400, you're not qualifying for an exemption off of your assessed value. Now, going to the town and the county, which is the middle column, you can get up to a 50% exemption from those two entities on their tax bills if you make less than $29,000 compared to our $20,000. And it works the same way. You can get up to 5% exemption on your assessed value if your income is below $37,399, which is again higher than ours. And if you're above $37,399, you know, you're not qualifying for any exemption with the town of Greece or the county. What we did, based on board request, is rather than match our schedule to the town and the counties, is to look at a halfway point between both schedules, which is what we're calling the mid-range. So, we are looking, if you're comparing column one to column three, we were at less than $20,000 for a 50% exemption. We're now saying, what if we made that $24,500 to get a 50% exemption? And we did that throughout all the steps that you're seeing on the schedule. This is just a graphic showing the three. The blue line is our current Greece schedule on the bottom. The orange line on the top is the county and the town, and the green line in the middle is the mid-range that we're proposing or showing you this evening. So, now to get to the numbers, excuse me. Currently, under the Greece column, with our current schedule, the way it is, 985 residents qualify for the senior exemption at some level, between 50% and 5%. Okay? I'll just read down that column. I'll do it. I'll just read down that column. I'll do it this way. For disability exemptions under Greece, 86 people qualify under our current schedule. It represents almost 1% of the tax base reduction in the tax value because the assessed values for those 985 people and the 86 people are the equivalent of $43.7 million worth of assessed value that comes off tax rolls as a deduction because they're not taxed. Okay? With the current schedule, our tax rate includes 22 cents equivalent to tax exemptions. Okay? Going over to the town and the county, their schedule allows for 1,587 senior exemptions because their thresholds are higher. Their schedule allows for 116 disability exemptions because their tax schedule is higher, and their assessed values equate to $86.7 million, or about 45 cents per thousand. Our proposed or the mid-range view would split that difference, and we would be go from 985 senior exemptions to 1,250, an increase, about 265 senior exemptions. Our disability exemptions would go from 86 to 95, an increase of about 11 disability exemptions. Our assessed value exemptions currently were at 43.7. We would go to $65 million, an increase of about $21.5 million of exemptions coming off of the tax rolls. And it would add, not add, the total rate change with the exemption would go to 33 cents versus our 22 cents, or an increase of 11 cents. So I'll take questions there right now, if anybody wants me to repeat any of that.
Any other questions on that? Okay.
So what's that do?
Mr. Bonagaria?
Thank you. The rate, the rate change with the exemption is the rate that applies to the taxpayers who are not exempted?
It's what is in the rate. So the rate itself is the levy over the assessed value of the district, correct?
Applied to?
For everyone. What changes is the exempt, the increase in the exemption will reduce the assessed value, which will make the rate increase. And if the rate increases, it increases for everyone across the board. However, those that qualify for the exemption automatically get a 50% or a 20% reduction. So what ends up happening is there is a shift from those that qualify from the exempt, for the exemption, to those that don't qualify for the exemption. And that would be currently to the tune of 22 cents per thousand. At the time, if we went to the max to match the town, it would have been 45 cents per thousand. And our mid-range split is 33 cents per thousand. But currently, in our rate, there's 22 cents built into our $24.84 per thousand rate at the current time, includes that 22 cents, which is a good launching point to the next point. If we went to the maximum limits, which is represented by the town and the county, our 2484 would go to 25, our rate this year would have went from 2484 to 2507. If we went and matched the county level by level. If we go with the mid-range, our rate this year would have went from 2484 to 2495. It would have increased 11 cents from 22 cents to 33 cents. And as a result of going to the max, the 2507, it would add, if we matched schedule for schedule with the town, we would be adding a 1% increase to the tax rate going into the budget development process for next year. If we go with the mid-range, it's about a 0.45% increase to the tax rate going forward. I'll pause there for a moment.
Mr. Maloney?
I got a question.
Turn your microphone on.
I'm sorry. I got a question. There's actually 985 people who own homes in Greece who make, under all these thresholds?
Yes.
It's impossible.
Yes.
I mean, gas, light, and food would do.
Yes.
Come to more than that.
We've got the numbers for, you know, we didn't break it down this way in this version. We've got the numbers of how many qualify under 20,000 and how many qualify under 25,000 and 30,000 to the max of 29, I think we had. But yes.
I guess I checked.
Yes, there's 985 households that qualify for this exemption, or some portion of this exemption from 50% down to 5%.
Yeah, I know, but they'd all be homeowners. So that's why I kind of find it hard to believe.
And again, this information, that's why we said, is right off of the tax rolls from the Town of Greece for this year.
Mr. Bonagaria?
Mr. Caluli, do we have a definition of what the income is comprised of? Do we, does that include pensioning?
It's total household income, but I'm not sure what if they, if they detail in there if it's pension income plus social security, or just social security, or other sources, or other income. I'm not, it's total household income. Gross. But I don't have a breakdown of what is in there. I could find that out, though.
Thank you.
I meant to do that. I apologize to you.
That's all right. Thanks.
At the altar, can we move on?
I'm going to move, I'll move on, and we can answer some questions shortly. So just some items to consider. So if we increase the thresholds to either to match the town and the county currently or to go midway, it provides tax relief to lower income and fixed income households. The decrease in the tax base is again a shift from those who qualify to those who don't qualify, and everybody else picks up the difference in what those exemptions equate to. There could be some property owners that are currently not receiving the exemption that could end up applying for these. We don't have those projected in here. And what we're not certain is if the town and the county are going to go to the new maximum $50,000 limit or not at this point, but we'll have to see. So options to consider, one is eliminate the exemption, which I don't think is realistic, but it's there. Leave the current exemption schedule in place for three more years and revisit it in three years when the policy comes up, or make some modification going down the road a little bit, or to change the exemption schedule for the 2324 school year or the 2425 school year, up to the statutory limits or some level in between. In order to do that, we need to notify the Town of Greece. Traditionally, it would be October, next month, for the 2324 tax bills, or next October of '23 for the 2425 tax bills. However, it's my understanding with these new limits, there may be an additional month or so, an additional few weeks for us this year because the county, the town is waiting for the county to make their decision in order for the town to make theirs, and then they will send out the applications to all the residents. Traditionally, those applications would go out late September, early October. It's my understanding they will go out a little bit later this year because they're waiting on the town and what they're going to do with the new requirement. Whatever change we do make to the tax exempt or the limited income exemption schedules would require a public meeting that we would have to hold.
Questions?
All right, I have a couple things. Do you know how long we have to post a public hearing for that? Is it 30 days?
I do not, but I will find out. I don't know offhand. I think it's just a public hearing.
We just got to call a public hearing.
I think we just need a public hearing.
Anybody have any questions, comments? I'm going to make a motion if we don't have. Okay, go ahead. Microphone.
I guess, Mr. Caluli, I got to ask you, what would your recommendation be?
You can't put him on the spot there. That's not his job. That's our job.
I know, but I.
Could you wink or something?
I'm having problems with this, so.
The, I'm not going to recommend, it's again, as Sean hit that, it's for the Board. One of the things that's tough for our department, and it comes with a, with an offset, one of the things that's tough for some of our folks is we get, every year, we get calls from residents who say, I don't understand what's going on. I got my school tax bill. I make $20,000 a year or $21,000 a year, and I get a 50% or a 45% break on my tax bill from the Town of Greece or the county. And with you guys, I get nothing because I don't, I don't qualify, or I get something much less. And we have to explain it that way. Now, in order to rectify that, it will cost us a half a percent more to the tax rate or a 1% increase to the tax rate before we even go into the budget development process. And normally, the budget development process, we have averaged in the range of 2% to 2.5% increase in the tax rate, 1.5 to, I would say 1.5 to 2.5. If we're still at, say, 2, we're now going to be at 2.5, or we're going to be at 3, to accommodate either going to the max or something less.
Thank you.
And again, if it changes to 50, which it's, which, again, you're talking now, we don't even know what the impact, I mean, right now, we're talking $38,000 to get an exemption. You're adding $13,000 more to that. These numbers could go up substantially. My guess would be, if we went to the max, it could be a 2%, 2.5% increase before we go in the budget increase.
Any other questions? Mr. Bonagaria?
Just pertaining to a public hearing, would that be here at a board meeting?
Yes.
Would that be one meeting?
Yep.
Would it also be online?
No, it would just be here. They'd have to sign up to speak. We have public hearings. Look for the code of conduct. You come, you sign up, and you speak on the limited income exemption if we have a public hearing.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we, I'm going to need a little leeway here because I need you to research that.
Yes.
Either we hold a public hearing September 20th or October 18th to, and a Board gets a resolution to adopt a mid-range income exemption. So I'm going to move it. Is there a second? Second by Vice President Malory. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all's in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. So we'll go with that. Just let me know.
We'll do it for the 20th. We'll look for the 20th.
Yeah, if we can do it the 20th, that'd be perfect.
I will let everyone know via email to Kathy and Sean.
Okay, thanks. All right, item 4.03, safety security updates. Can I have somebody, our Superintendent Graupman?
Make a motion. I was going to have Steve Chertan come on up. There's a couple of things that are really important that we want to clarify, particularly based on some of the comments that were made at residence forums. So as many of you know, there has been a change in terms of how we're structuring our security and support services at our schools. So what Steve's going to do is really sort of walk through the changes and what we currently do have set for the beginning of school. This information has been sent home to families. It's been really clearly articulated, but I just want to make sure that we say that again, and also give the Board an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions.
Good evening. Good to be back. So what we decided to do is we, when we couldn't come to agreement with the town, which I fully support the Board in that decision, we reached out to two retired Greece police officers who recently retired. One's Eric Hughes, who was a former school resource officer. The other one's Todd Gomir, who's also a former school resource officer. They were both in our schools for extended periods of time. They both present, they both hold on to their armed security licenses. So we hired them as district safety officers to take the place of the two school resource officers. So we still have two armed, basically armed guards within the district. They both, like I said, they both have their licenses. They join our team with myself, John Henderson, who's a retired police lieutenant, along with Mike Scaly, who's one of my assistants. And we have about 35 other guards, and some of them are former law enforcement. I don't know where the 80 number came from that you heard about in the forum. That was never discussed. I said we're at full staff. We are at full staff now. I met with the district safety officers today. They start tomorrow. The first day is tomorrow. We're going to deploy them mainly in the high schools and the middle schools, but I've also had talks with the Superintendent and the Board President about possibly interviewing a third that would do the elementary schools. But we're still, you know, working on that. So we do have a plan. But we also made very clear their assignments and what their assignments are, and their role will be a little different than the police officer role, a little different than the SRO role as far as, you know, how I deploy them. But they understand what that is. Obviously, I'm not going to disclose that at a public meeting, but we went over that today. They do help with prevention. We still have a very good relationship with the police department and the guys on the road. So even though we didn't come to an agreement with the town, I've been working with the deputy chief about who's taking some of the roles, like on our safety teams, district-wide safety team, on our threat assessment team. They're going to send the CID supervisor. So threat assessment, it came out of Parkland, basically says all school shooters or active shooters show some type of behavior that warns you of it. So we have a threat assessment team. So they're going to have assigned somebody to the threat assessment team. They're assigning, the deputy chief is actually going to sit on our district-wide safety team meeting, meetings now, so he'll attend those. And then the building level meetings are going to be attended by the road supervisors. The two radios that the road, that the SROs possessed are both going to the road patrol supervisors. So they still have our radios, and we'll continue to call 911 whenever we need a police report. So some of the things the SRO did was to prevent us from having to call 911. 911's free. They have to respond. So there, there's 11,000 kids in our district that are children of taxpayers. So we can still call 911. We still plan on doing that. We've made a Google spreadsheet. We're going to track every time we call 911. We're going to track what time we called, what time they arrived, and what it was for. So we'll have a good report on you after a few months to know where we stand with that. But we wanted to make sure that, that the police department understand we're, we're doing that. And, you know, some of the times, they don't realize how much the SROs took care of that happened outside of school that came in. We'll now be referring that back to the police department. So when we get a parent coming in saying something happened on a Saturday night, we're sending it back to the police department because we used to take care of that. So we still have a very good relationship with them now. And we also installed new cameras in every, every school. So we doubled our cameras. We, we installed new lockdown buttons, scrolling signs, so they're all active. I can actually put a school into a lockdown from my cell phone now. And then I'll preach to you forever that security is a system. It's not just SROs. It's not just cameras. It's everything we do. And I could stand up here for an hour and a half and tell you everything we do to help prevent things, to help alleviate functions, the way we work with our principals, our safety plans. So we could talk about that forever. But the building level plans are done. We've sent them to the principals. They're built, they're meeting with their building level teams to discuss issues. I talked about how we already talked to the deputy chief about the different things that happened. But one of the things I want, you know, when I hear people talking about they're afraid of the SROs of not being in the building, what did Parkland and Uvalde have in common? They both had SROs, didn't stop a school shooting. What did TOPS have? TOPS had an armed security guard, doesn't stop shootings. So just because you have an SRO doesn't mean it's going to happen, that you're going to stop a school shooting. And recent polls put out by the Washington Post, put your odds of being involved in a school shooting in 1,600 million. So that the chances of a school happening are still rare. Violence is up. I have a very good feel, I had a bad feeling going into last year. You know, I told everybody I thought things were going to be bad. We did so much work this summer with our admin team, with our staff today. I did five active shooter presentations for our staff today, and the different training we're doing. I have a good feeling about this year. So we'll see. Kathy Clickio thinks I'm jinxing everything. But, you know, last year I was right, and this year I'm hoping. But I just can't, I can't like, you know, verbalize. like, you know, verbalize how much we do. You know, the phones ring from 6:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night, every day, you know? Not just once in a while, it's every day. So we do so much prevention and other things, and, you know, someday I'll stand here and I'll, I'll show you what we did. You know, obviously not tonight, because today's been a long day. And tomorrow's gonna be a long day. But I feel good going into this year with where we're at. You know, do we lose something by losing the SROs? We lose some things, yeah, but we're gonna back, you know? And maybe someday we'll come up to, with an agreement with them. You know, we wanted Babcock back, we wanted Bachman back. You know, I mean, we offered them a very good price. So, you know, we did the best we can to come up with a solution based on the circumstances. Questions?
Ms. Flores?
Thank you. One of the comments that was made earlier was about the relationship that the prior SROs had with our students and such. Considering that we are hiring now for these district safety officers, officers, retired Greece police officers that held this SRO role in the past, do you feel that that's gonna be any issue, and I would expect?
I think Eric Hughes is possibly the most loved SRO that the Greece Central School District has ever had. I mean, if you ever watch Eric Hughes interact with the kids, it's like, literally, he's the mayor of Greece Olympia. The kids wave to him out the bus, you know, same with Todd Gomir. So I don't think, well, you know, I'm not taking anything away with what Bachman and Babcock did. They're both phenomenal, they're both instructors. Babcock was there every day, early, stayed late, answered my phone at 6:00 in the morning. But I think Todd and Eric will do the exact same thing, and they have a great relationship. But it's not, you know, the things that, the relationships are also through my guards. You know, my guards, we tell them, "We would rather have you tell us about a fight before it happens than actually break up a fight." So, but we're not gonna skip a beat with those two guys. The only difference are, they can't take a report, you know, they can't take a police report, and that's about it. You know, I mean, and they don't have arrest powers, obviously, but we'll call 911 for that. And with raising age, we don't really make that many arrests in school, anyway.
Any other questions? Mr. Bonagario? Microphone.
Mr. Chatterton, would you say, would you describe this solution as being an improvement, or would you describe it as being a second best?
So, right now, if I was gonna describe it, I would say, going into the year, I feel good about it, and I feel it's pretty even. You know, based on the adjustments we've made. You know, we've made some adjustments, and with the new lockdown app and things that we're far ahead, and without training, we're doing more staff training. Or without COVID, we're doing more staff training. So I'm going to every staff meeting over the next couple of weeks to educate everybody on what we do behind the scenes and what they don't see. So, you know, I mean, the only thing we really lose is the police radio. You know, that's all we really lose. But we have panic buttons in all the schools now, they go directly to 911. You know, so go, ask me in three months, same question, but right now, I'll tell you, I think we're pretty even.
Vice President Moore?
I wanna thank you. We were hit with a horrible situation, and I can't believe how quickly you came to finding us a solution. We had such limited time. I am thrilled with the officers that are coming. I do know them, and it is amazing, their relationship with the children and the community. So thank you.
No problem. And the thing I'll add to you is the one thing that's nice about this is we control their schedules now. So under the SROs model, they could take a SWAT day, a vacation day, a sick day, we had no say over it. So they could take three days before a break, and we couldn't say, "No, that, that can't be done." With this one, we can. They won't, they're not taking days off. We didn't give them vacation days. They're working a teacher's schedule, and they're working every school day, and they're gonna be in our buildings at 7:00, and they're gonna be there until 3:30. So with the SROs, they had to go get a car, they had to go to roll call, they had to do their paperwork. You know, by the time they got in school, it could be 7:30, 8:00, and then they were out, 2:30. So now we have a, basically, you know, retired SRO for 8.5 hours a day.
Any other question, Mr. Bonagario?
So I know there were some, some comments, and there are, there's a lot of concern about this issue. I know one of the kind of ideas that's been around is that we were trying to avoid the expense or something like that. I know that part of the, part of the issue is being prudent in how we provide the necessary security. If you, if there's, if I'm missing anything in that, please correct me on that.
We offered the town $280,000 for two cops. That's more than anybody in Monroe County pays by about $30,000. So we made the town a very fair offer. We thought it was a great partnership. We've had that partnership for 20-plus years. So, you know, they didn't come off their 350, and I support the decision of the board president and the superintendent, that we made a very fair, fair offer, and we were being prudent with our money and getting the best for our students and taxpayers.
Can you just follow up with that?
Sure.
And on top of that, we, we had, we weren't, obviously, clearly, we were not locked into one single option there. We had other options to consider.
Yeah, I mean, we looked, we did look into other options. We looked at possibly the sheriff's department, they have a manpower issue. Everybody has a manpower issue right now in the police world. And it takes a year, maybe longer, a year and a half, to go from hire to finish. You know, there's a nine-month background process, and probably another nine months in the academy. So it's not a quick fix. And, you know, every police department is in the same boat. So when we called the sheriff's department, they were actually very receptive, because Churchville had just signed an agreement with them for a lot less money than we offered the town of Greece. You know, so, you know, we did reach out looking for other options. You know, we wanted the Greece Police Department. You know, we wanted specifically Babcock and Bachman. You know, they did a great job for us. So, you know, we did the best that we could based on the situation. But, you know, we did look at other options, and we did talk about, you know, other plans. And, you know, you say how quick we got this done. This was two and a half, three weeks that we got it done. And it was about a million conversations between myself and Sean McCabe and Kathy Groutmann, and, you know, people in law enforcement that I know. And again, it's about who you know, what you know, and what you do in the system. You know, it's not just about the SROs. The SROs have great relationships with the kids. It's also knowing people in probation, family court, judges, you know, things we need to look into on our daily basis. So we know those people already. We don't need them for that. We needed them for, you know, a physical presence, and make the students feel safe, make parents feel safe, but we're getting that back with Hughes and Gomir.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the community understands that this was not something that just had to be accomplished. We did do really good due diligence of it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanna thank you. I mean, you and Kathy especially. This was three weeks before school, with everything else going on. This was a monumental task to get accomplished, and we're ready to go today. So that's pretty impressive. I just wanna thank you.
Can I have somebody move the change orders to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Flores, seconded by Mrs. Farmer. Any comments, questions, or concerns on the change orders? The only comment I'll make is the change orders amount to about $21,975. Is that correct, Mr. Colley?
Yes.
All right. Let know all their comments, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving on to extra classroom treasuring report for June of 2022. Can I have somebody move that to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Mrs. Flores. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving on to item 5.03, the bids. Can I have somebody move those to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Mr. Swick. Any comments, questions, concerns on those? All those in favor? That passes eight to zero. And lastly, the Capital Projects Coronavirus Response Supplemental Appropriations. Can I have somebody move that to the table, please? Moved by Mrs. Farmer, seconded by Ms. Flores. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all's in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Anticipated bids is written information only. Can I have somebody move the consent agenda to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Mr. Swick. Any comments, questions, or concerns on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all's in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving on to item 8.01, can I have somebody move the textbook approval to the table, please? Moved by Vice President Moore, seconded by Ms. Flores. Any comments, questions, concerns on this? Mr. Bonagario?
Yes, I would just like to reiterate a suggestion that I had made in the past, where this is something that it seems to me we have a lot of lead time. I'd like to be able to do my own due diligence, as well as what I know is being done behind the scenes. This, it seems, could be made available to us well in advance, and it would be helpful. So I would make that suggestion.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns? All right, with that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving on to the district initiation of an impartial due process hearing. Can I have somebody move that? Moved by Vice President Moore, seconded by Ms. Flores. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all's in favor? Any opposed? That passes, oh, that passes seven to one. Next item, board member comments. Any board member comments? Mrs. Farmer?
So I'd just like to say that I'm feeling a little melancholy here at School Days opening tomorrow. I'm not part of it, and I've been so appreciative of being at openings always this morning, and I went and visited two of my core liaison schools and made great conversations with the principals and members of my staff. And I'm gonna go with Steve Chatterton. Feeling good this year, feeling good.
Thanks, Mrs. Farmer. Any other board member comments? Mr. Bonagario?
So I, I wanna say this was, this morning was my first opportunity to be at the, the opening day. And it was, it was really great. I loved, the choirs were great, the, I wanna suggest that the choir that sang the National Anthem, maybe try out for the Super Bowl. It was really phenomenal. Had a great conversation with, with one of our staff, I'll just say Phyllis. Just, it, working in special ed, just hearing some of the great things that are going on. It's just, it's just really encouraging to see, you know, there's, there's a lot of really good stuff going on. So just wanna say thanks, and off to a good start.
Awesome. Any other board member comments? Mr. Swickie?
So, one, one thing that's just been bugging me for a bit, it's either in the news or we hear in form here, right, is as we talk about the yonder pouches and the $100,000, and the excessive nature of that spending, right? For me, right, that $100,000, don't get me wrong, it's a big number to me, anyone at this table, right? That's huge, right? But you have to put it in the context of our entire district spend, right? So I said this when we talked about this before, right? It's $250 million, $260, $270, it keeps going, right? But my point is, when you do the math, right, that $100,000 is .0004% of our budget. It's the equivalent of somebody in the district, a family of four, whether you're $50,000 or $100,000 household income, whatever you wanna call it, it's pizza night, right? It's going out, buying a pizza for your family, right? And so I guess my challenge would be, if you're a family in this district, and I asked you if you would buy pizza for your family, right, to ensure that they had a better academic experience, right? You mitigated, not eliminated, but mitigated some of the bullying, some of the nonsense that goes on in our schools, give you a better, secure environment, would you buy your family pizza? Because I would. I'd buy it like 100 times over, we'd have pizza every Friday.
I'm coming to your house.
So anyways, I, I just gotta get that out. I know we're gonna talk about it a million more times, right? But we need to keep in context, as we make investments here, and those big numbers that you hear, right, you gotta put it in context of what our total budgetary spend is. And where, again, my partner here said, you know, where we spend our money, how we allocate our funds to ensure we have a secure and academic-friendly environment, you know, those are the decisions we're making. So I feel better. The other piece that I wanted to just say is, I'm excited about the school year as well, right? This feels normal, right? I, as normal as can be, and we're not talking about masks, or, or colors, or zones, or any of that, right? Like, I, normal, I got, I got three going in, right? First day, we got the normal combination of emotions, right? Butterflies, anxious, excitement. But it was great to just have to worry about school supplies, and like, what kinda lunchbox do you want, right? Like, oh, I hope your friends are in your class, like, normal conversations. It's so refreshing, right? And I just hope we have the best year. Like Mr. Chatterton said, I have a good feeling, right? And so hopefully, it comes true. So, good luck to everyone, and thanks in advance for a great year.
Thanks, Mrs. Swickie. Ms. Flores?
I just wanted to say, congratulations again. I got to go to graduation in August for our students who did not get to walk the stage in June for our various high schools. So, cool milestone for a lot of those students. And it was really great energy to be there and be present, and to watch them get their diploma, which I think some of them thought maybe they would never get there. So congratulations to those students and those families, and all of the staff and teachers that supported them to get there. For them, it is a really, for all of us, it's a really big deal. So, thank you to all the teachers and staff who got everything ready to go, like John said. It feels a lot more normal this year. And I got the usual from my kids, "I don't wanna go to school tomorrow." And I also got the same speech from my teenage daughter, who is really not pleased about the yonder pouch that she's gonna be using next year. But for me, I equated that to her about, there's just rules in society in order to follow. It's kinda like the speed limit. Do I wanna follow the speed limit on most occasions? I probably shouldn't be sharing this, but no, I don't. But in order for us to have a reasonable society, we have to do things for the greater good of everybody. I think this board as a whole has talked about, we also have a lot of questions about that program, which is why we asked for a review within three months. I guess I'm just asking everybody, give it a chance, let's see what happens. If it doesn't go well, as a board, I think, and I don't like to speak for everybody, but we will be the first to sit here to talk to you about other options if, that we would be willing to look at. The education of our students has to be the first and foremost. And yes, there are exceptions to every rule, and I know that, that we have things in place to deal with those. So I'm just hoping everybody just kinda gives each day of this new school year a chance. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Flores. Vice President Moore?
Okay, so part of our new responsibilities this year is we get a department, and I had the opportunity to work with Human Resources this year. And they invited me to their staff meeting. I finally got to see all the faces and understand the breakdown of how that works. And I'm really thrilled as a board that we are exploring departments as well as schools. I know I learned a lot, and it was great to have, I'd love to go again and speak with you. One of my schools this year is Patty Hill, and I was there, and they're so excited for their students to come back. One of the things they did was their neighborhood stop, which I thought was adorable. And they went to basically, for just two or three minutes, to bus stops and drew on, met some of the students in the community, and did some chalkwork. And I, I think that helped the kids get used to seeing the principal and things like that. I wanna wish everybody a wonderful opening tomorrow. I have been in some of the schools, and I love how shiny those floors are. That was always a nice thing for teachers to see. So good luck to everybody, and keep those buses rolling.
All right, my turn. Couple things that happened earlier that I wanna address. One is that our responding to emergencies program, the Office of New York State Fire Prevention and Control approved our basic exterior fire operations for our responding to emergencies students. And myself and Dr. Clickio were in a meeting, and the director of OFPC basically said we weren't gonna be able to do that. But with the support of the fire chiefs in the town of Greece, Dr. Clickio, Mr. Maross, we managed to get that to happen, which is an amazing accomplishment and an amazing opportunity for our students. Also, on that note, five of our students took the civil service exam to be a firefighter within Monroe County. All five of them passed, and two of them are currently reachable on the civil service list to be hired as firefighters, hopefully in the town of Greece. So that's quite an accomplishment, and that, that program, again, has come a tremendous way. And I just wanna thank Dr. Clickio, she's done an amazing job with that program. I wanna thank Facility Operations. Some of my colleagues hit on it, I'm sure Superintendent Groutmann is. But the amount of work they had to do, especially in our buildings, to get school ready, and the job they do every year is absolutely amazing. get school ready, and the job they do every year is absolutely amazing. Especially at Odyssey, there were some bumps in the road, and they ended up working all weekend, on holiday weekend, to get the building ready for opening. So I'm super thankful to them on what they do. And then I attended Welcome Back this morning. And it's the one thing, and even looking in the room around here, it's just amazing, the glow. All of you educators have. You all have a glow. It's, it's absolutely phenomenal for me to see. And I take so much pride in it, that you're all so excited to go back to school. I mean, in January, your faces probably aren't going to look the same. But I just, I take such a, it just gives me so much energy and makes me so proud that you guys are so passionate and are ready to go back to work tomorrow. And you've worked all summer, most of you. But it's just with the kids coming in, it's a whole new experience. And I just want to thank you and enjoy your opening day. You only get so many of them, so enjoy it.
And with that, Superintendent Grautman?
Yeah, I would add, my favorite month this September always has been since I was a kid. And it's because I loved school as a kid. And I've loved school for my entire career for 30 years. I think one of the things that's really important to note is that as educators, with the cycle of a school year, we get a new year every year. And with that, I think we also get this sort of innate piece of us that's always thinking about, how can we improve? How can we get better? What can we do? So when I hear people like Mr. Chatterton talk about being excited about this year, it's because there was a whole lot of work done between last year and this year to improve and to continue to get better. And that's true for so many of our departments. And that, I think, is also part of the excitement that we feel as colleagues that are working in schools about that excitement, because it's like a new chance. And it's, it's time, and it's a way for us to continue to improve. I would just give a huge thank you to Kristy Costco. I want to give her a shout out. She was the beautiful woman, music director from Arcadia, who has helped us on a million occasions. She goes above and beyond to coordinate kids, get kids in practicing so that you could experience that on opening day, whether that be the National Anthem, or whether that be the song that the, that the students sing. And that is not without effort. There was a ton of practice and time put into that, and coordinating families, and schedules, and communication. So huge thank you to her, Michelle Laverne Way, and Seth for, for helping with the opening day piece. The other piece that I mentioned this morning that I think is important, and John recognized it as well, our facilities and planning. So the Lew department and the Kirk Keller department, our buildings and grounds, have really had a summer like no other. And there's a lot that people have seen over the last week in terms of this frantic trying to get our schools ready. But what they didn't see is it started three weeks ago. It started four weeks ago. No one's had rest this summer from buildings and grounds. And they're not just worried about their schools. They're redeploying and bringing people over to other schools. And they're working A shift and B shift, and doing a ton of that. So I just want to really fully recognize, and I promised Kevin Maloney that I would not ask him to do a darn thing for me. There, there would be no request. So they're just, they're, they're tired. And, but you would never know it, because I will also say they are the department in this district that have this absolutely incredible respect and just always say yes. So I really appreciate that and want to give a huge thanks. And at some point, do something to really significantly recognize all the work that's been done, whether that be on weekends and different shifts and overtime. And like many of you, I'm excited about the new year. I'm excited about all the improvements that we've made. And I know that everyone's not excited about yonder. And my 14-year-old niece made it really clear to me how she was in disagreement with me, and she said it differently than that. But I guess I would point out the, and reiterate, I guess, what Mrs. Flores said in terms of just being able to give it a try. And your analogy, I think, is perfect in that I'm curious, I don't think in six weeks, every kid is going to love this. But I do wonder, when we ask the question, are you able to focus more? Are you able to free your mind a bit more during the day? Have you improved your relationships? And are you talking more at lunch versus being on your phone? Those are the questions that I'm curious about. I'm curious about looking at our data in terms of referral data, suspension data, bullying data. There's a lot of things that we have been very mindful of in terms of the way that this has been considered, planned, and the amount of work that's gone into implementation. Mark Fleming, you, and Steve, and the principals, I just really appreciate that. And I would ask people, because it does require us to be a bit open-minded, give it a try. Let that really solid implementation go through. And then we will look at the data. We will get perception data and more informal data also from kids and families, and be having more conversations about this. But I think that's just one example of how Greece isn't willing to just sit. So there's a lot of people that can complain about fights on buses, and bullying, and things. We're doing something. So as much as people want to complain and point all of those things out, we're doing something. And I'm not going to apologize about that, because it's going to be something that we've gotten ahead of, that we've tried in the best interest of our kids. And I can see it being really beneficial for many of them. So I look forward to seeing that. But I also look forward to the work that's instructionally happening in our schools, the work that's going on to support kids socially, emotionally, and all that we continue to do to extend to our families in terms of outreach to a community who has become more and more needy through the years. So thank you to all of, to everybody here for their efforts. And I look forward to a great year.
Thank you, Superintendent Grautman. Mr. Maloney?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second on that? Ms. Flores, all those in favor? Nobody ever opposes that? So that's an eighth and a half.